We're in our clerk's room in 702 P. N. And we'll go ahead and commence the September 10th, 2012.
All right.
Uh, start with, uh, are there any modifications to our agenda? Do you have modifications? I see none. Mayor's comments. I don't have a whole lot to say other than Locust Street project is moving along in a nice steady pace. Uh, it'd be nice if they could go in and get it done in sixty days' time, but progress doesn't, very rarely goes as fast as you'd like. However, something that's moving along very rapidly is our, uh, restroom facilities, our storage unit, our concession stand at the soccer fields. Guys have made strides in getting that up to par and moving forward. Uh, we've got the outer walls done, got framed in. I got to spend a day there, nail gun and compressor helping frame. I found that enjoyable because it had my phone on me. Got a lot done. Uh, we'll be seeding some toilets here in the next few days. And, uh, I believe we might have it, uh, ready to go by, I heard, September 15th.
It's Saturday.
It's Saturday. Roger, what do you think? You gonna have it done by Saturday?
A lot to do.
You're not opposed to it though?
I don't know. Uh, all work over time, go hand to hand, but you said, see how things go.
I think we'll have it done by Saturday. Are there any citizen comments? Anyone, anywhere? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, no citizen comments. Minutes and bills. Uh, we do have a few additions to the bills. Um, and, uh, these are pages on page two. Oh, one dash zero one three five Phillips &amp; Sons fire S.E. Uh, the first item, uh, spread of two thousand two Chevy and power repair. Even two, uh, should be two thousand nine Chevy and power to two thousand two. And, uh, we've got three lines from father Joel Lane. Uh, says two thousand two Chevy and power repair rebuild transmission. Uh, that should be two thousand nine Chevy and power. Uh, there are also some additions on building supplies. Yes, sir.
Yeah, maybe. That's, that's cool. That's your knowledge here that you want to be able to store.
Okay, so it's a two thousand nine, uh, Ford Crown Vic repair. Okay. We've also have, uh, building supplies for the concession restroom. Uh, nine hundred and seventy dollars, forty-two cents, uh, to the lumber. Uh, we've looked at it for the siding through. Uh, I think that's about it. Everyone's got it covered, okay? And that'll be, we'll be happy.
Can anyone's budget start?
The new budget will start October 1st, once we get it enacted. So we need to get it enacted this month.
I make a motion to approve. Need some variables.
Is that with the addition?
With the addition.
This is your second?
Yeah.
Second? I'll call for a roll for both.
James.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
That motion passes? We'll go to department head reports. Debbie, our administration.
Well, we need to schedule another budget meeting. So, do you guys just want to do next Monday night for seventeen?
Grab my calendar.
Why, why can't we do it on our?
We need to adopt the, the budget on the 24th. So we needed to have one more meeting to discuss the final changes, um, and the wage schedules.
Well, at that time, we will adjust for wages.
Yeah. And then you'll finalize it at another meeting where everything's printed and bound up for you.
Rachel says Monday night's final.
Any objections to Monday?
Did I, did I make a motion or?
No, you just accept.
I have a question, Debbie, about your report. And it's about the, um, new activities. I'm gonna read it so everybody sitting there can see what I see. Attached to the new ordinance to change the budget section to how it is done. Please let me know if anything needs changed as I would like to have it approved at the September 24th meeting. Um, I was brought into the mayor's office before this meeting and chastised for my opinions regarding this. And I just want to make it public that the, um, the budget ordinance that we have currently is not being followed. We have, in our administration report, she has submitted a new proposal. I don't know if anybody would like to see what the new proposal is, but it is not the same as our current budget ordinance. It changes quite a few things to give, um, quite a bit of responsibility to, to people, the mayor and our city administrator. Um, did anyone else on the council notice this at all?
I had no problem with it.
Well, you noticed it, but I had no problem with it. You had asked a question, Mel. I'd like Debbie to respond to that regarding we're not following, uh, our ordinances as currently written. Debbie?
This is the way that it's been done for the last nineteen years. So this is the way the board's been doing it. The board has never come up with the revenue estimates. The board has never put the preliminary data together. The board has never contacted the department heads and asked them to give their estimates for the year. I've always put the preliminary budget together. Then we start having budget meetings with, at one point, there was a budget committee, but now it's the whole council. And then you guys decide what you want put in the budget. This was not supposed to be me putting the budget together. This was what I do now. And I did check with three other cities and the three other cities all do it, have, have a person in that spot. They all have a budget calendar that looks just like ours. Ozark has their budget, has a budget officer named, which is their city administrator. Fair Grove has their city clerk named first in all of those. And Camden Town has a budget officers, which is defined as the finance person, the mayor, and the city clerk.
Okay.
So I didn't think there was anything out of line. I was just trying to fix an ordinance. And the only reason it even came up is I brought Andrew's attention that the number six in the previous ordinance said that it had to be adopted at the regular meeting in September, and we didn't have it ready to adopt. In the nineteen years I've been here, we've had it adopted one time at that, the regular meeting in September. So that was what we were actually trying to fix. I was just trying to fix the rest of it to how we actually do it.
Well, I'm new. And when I was sworn in, I was sworn to uphold the ordinances of the city of Buffalo. And I've made every effort to try to get to know these ordinances. I'm not an expert, but I do believe that everyone else on this coun, council took the same oath that I took. And, I mean, this is not the only ordinance. Uh, no offense, Debbie, but you don't have the authority to propose an ordinance. There's a proper procedure in that one of the aldermen are supposed to submit it to our city attorney, and then it's supposed to be presented to the council. And we're not doing these things correctly because we're not abiding by our city ordinances. We're not going to them and trying to figure out what they say. We're just doing whatever we want to do, and I don't think that's right.
There was no disrespect intended, Christie. I was doing things the way we've always done, so.
Let me, let me come down on this. If Donald Duck wants to propose an ordinance to this council, we can do it. We'll look over that ordinance, and we'll go along. I guarantee you the Senate of the United States does not write our federal laws. Neither does the state. I was almost due a word for six years. It was done pretty much the same way it's done. And I think it's netting to come in here. We're trying to conduct business. Debbie does a good job. She's done it for a long time. It's absolutely ridiculous to come in here and question it. I'm not gonna vote for that ordinance. I've written one ordinance this year. And if I like Debbie's ordinance, that's fine. And as far as I'm concerned, keep doing it exactly the way you're doing it.
Regarding this?
And I, and I don't like your reference to my own laws. I take it very, very seriously. And that's another example of netting. And you need to keep doing it.
I'm not trying to, I just, as an average citizen, I, I am a citizen in the city of Buffalo. And I care about the integrity of everyone sitting up here. And I think that we should all take this seriously.
Ms. Hornet, and I'll ask you. You've stated that our ordinance requires our alderman to prepare his budget, correct?
That's what it says.
And that our board has to approve it by the first regular meeting September, is that correct?
That's what it says.
Have you done anything to prepare our budget? You have a budget ready to prepare, present for board to oversee?
We're supposed to do that together. And this is something that was just brought to my attention. Yes, I've attended every meeting, and I have tried diligently to read the ordinances and understand them because I believe that this is what is supposed to be our guide, not just what we think or, there's laws. There's a reason for laws, and we should follow them.
Do you think that it, that it would be wise to, uh, tailor our laws to mirror what we're doing and what's efficient and what's ineffective? Or do you have a budget to present for passage this evening?
Look, that's not my responsibility. That is the council's responsibility as a whole. It is our responsibility.
Have you done anything above, beyond what any of the other five ordinance have done?
I'm not insinuating that I am. I am just stating and bringing it to the board's attention that we are not following the city ordinances.
Okay. And would it be out of line to propose an ordinance that would make it easier for us to get our budget passed?
It would, but we need to follow the ordinances until such time as we change them. You can't do as we please and then change it to suit us. That's, I mean, we would be outraged if our federal government didn't. And I, I'm outraged. I think this is not the way that it should be done.
Any other questions or administrative? Any other comments? All right. Anna will be ready.
I'd like to say something about ours, you know, because what you presented may be a good idea. But I do think that whenever you guys have a vote, you guys need to follow regardless. I don't think that this council or this mayor or you guys can decide to be doing things about oilers and high gear. A lot of people that are, I know that people that are pleased, but I see it as a positive thing. So I don't think it's whatever is going on ahead, but I think that it's a good exit for doing it correctly. I think that if you guys have written it down, change it. If it's efficiently different way than change, then we're changing it so that our laws are more efficient and have a bit.
And that's certain.
Doing it a different way. I have to agree with that, because that's the proper way to do it.
And we have an order to put in that, change things. We're doing things on the F and up in the same customary and always done. And I apologize. All right, our building's up there. Are there any questions for our building? Our fire department, our fire chief, oh, I didn't think you were here. I was, my mistake. We're not here.
I'm here.
All right. Any questions for our fire chief? All right, park department, sir.
Uh, I just want to thank all of you guys who are walking down that, I'm really not surprised. I think we're going to be in the session for Saturday. It hasn't been a long time, it's very nice. I think we can probably drive around and get all the things we were doing. I want to, I thought you'd already called me on this, but I'm sorry.
It's very darn heavy, Roger. It'd hurt.
Of course, what you've got to begin with is here's your drainage way that we're looking at converting using drainage into trade. So what we have to do in order to get the trail and the drainage size where they'll pick it up is we have to know how much drainage comes through this. So we start at the south of thirty-two. We isolate the amount of water when it rains that actually comes down and tries to work this way, doesn't go that way, that way, or this way. What comes through here? And so we've broken this into pieces from thirty-two over to Main Street. And then Main Street to Hickory, Hickory to, uh, or not Hickory, to Mill. And then Mill on out to Park. Because each one of those pieces is going to have more water added. So as this thing goes along and heads north, you have an area needing drainage, these bigger and bigger and bigger. So we looked through the south part and we went through, of course, you've got box culvert under thirty-two. With that set up, we start looking through, and I'll leave this here for the closer details if you're real curious about what it gives us is we're trying to get to what each piece of it costs and what it would look like. And if there are issues, it should go along. Well, getting from the south side to thirty-two, uh, this is what a grass channel with a trail beside it would look like. We're not going to be trailing on the south side of thirty-two. But from thirty-two to Main Street, we have a grass channel, we have a box culvert. Uh, the issue there is that's behind, that's behind a football field between the elementary schools, so you're in those backyards. So you may or may not be able to get the trail and the drainage through. Being a joint project, you may fix the stormwater issue, get the water to drain out of it. But depending on the cooperation of the property owners on whether or not you're going to be able to start that trail from that far down. It'd be nice to start that far down so that you can get access here to Jefferson to get to most students. If you can't, if you only fix the drainage, then the drainage gets fixed to Main Street, your trail is started. Uh, Main Street, well, it's way out there. Again, these pieces just go on through and they're bigger and bigger. One of the interesting pieces is when you get to Madison, you've been on Madison, that's such a low road coming in to Hickory. Then in order to get a box culvert or a hundred pikes or whatever you want to use to get that water underneath that road, it's gotta be so low or you just back that water back into the nursing home and everything else. So one of the things we threw out there was you could stop Madison right there and not let it come on to Hickory Street. Just get in, just open that up, right, which would be a drainage problem. Uh, when you get up to, uh, Mill and Hickory, you're gonna have to have a pretty good crossing here with these box culverts to get into and cross and over to the Hale property. And then you've gotta have a, uh, there's a pretty substantial box culvert already there, but it's gotta be extended.
Realize a little bit, Roger, utilize what's in place and if it has to.
And once you get past, once you get past the county's guard and out into here, then it just goes all to grass with a trail up on the edge. Again, define now what we can do now is take that and break that into costs per segment. Those who utilize the grant applications and stuff, that's a few, and you'll have to cost them a little bit. We submitted a request to MODOC from the back of their facility up here. Right, on the backside of your property where they got their fence set, the creeks outside, they still own it.
The creek is, is the rock.
We just submitted a request for them to see if they'd be willing to give us a placement. And that through there's something I'm using anyway, and there's a check of the severity.
How much will the gift of land prove to the entire ownership, to the entire property?
We can utilize that for part of the matching. Uh, the most grants will be up eighty percent, twenty percent, eighty percent federal, ninety, twenty percent local supply. So we can include and praise cost of land and get credit for that as part of the percentage. All things that come into play, if you need to go and try and find funding, you can help with the construction. And again, in that show, that's where we are today and what we're about to do next. We will, the cost factor, that's what we're saying.
Uh, we, we do have a, a grant opportunity coming up through, uh, MODOC, is that correct?
They, uh, they are out for grant requests. A new situation, uh, since they redistricted the state, we're dealing with a lot bigger pool than we can get.
And, uh, there's of course that, uh, probably myself or Debbie needs to attend. And what, and Debbie, you, what, what court do you have?
It's a local public agency training for MODOC.
I think so, it's been a while.
This is a brand new agency.
Yeah, it's a brand new, it's not, no.
So I forwarded you an email on the, you know, some of the kind of trainings or, uh, somebody from the city, the landlord, or whoever you have to be, you know, to, to support.
And what, what's that grant application due?
I believe it's November fifth.
And I spoke to, um, earlier about, uh, the possibility of great enterprise in the grant force. There are some new laws or speed laws.
There, there are always new regulations. And all these regulations, we used to do those things for you for free, uh, like doing the design or, or do it too. The general highway and MODOC don't allow us to do that anymore and require us to charge you to put those together. And that, that, that contract has to be paid in complete before they can start to designs it or whatever, unless it was on the law. So if we put a request in the federal highway, what is the minimum amount to allow charging and still be considered a legal contract? Because we hope we can't charge you dollars in all other states, but it entails a good, good charging.
No, we could potentially write that, write, uh, buy for that grant amount, is that correct?
You could, but remember it's a, a better grant, eventually it's a, uh, anybody's gonna be willing to, takes a fair amount of specific information to do that grant process.
Let us know and, uh, let us put in that course, uh, if I go, I'll even make it to the end.
The key is that you get through and you have your name in the, uh...
Could the jury students?
What if that's...
No. Maybe if I, you, Abraham, would you be a better grant worker, maybe you can help to, uh... Ask them and they'll tell you what they can. And, uh, I would, just like when they told you that you were getting eight thousand dollars for the services for four thousand, I'd tell you that you're right to have it. Would, would you hire a doctor that's in his first semester in medical school to do your grant circuit?
I said, I did you say it?
I asked, I asked wrong person, Mr. Shuck. The old, the old person considered they got full value of a surgeon for their first semester of school, I didn't think they would. So that statement was not valid for that statement.
Are you talking about closing Madison?
Uh, we said that's a suggestion, it could be booked.
It's an idea.
Yeah, but doesn't that water, that water now, for the water?
It, it goes over and you put the expense in, putting a structure in, it would pay care of that water. And you're still, you know, greater than a twenty-five year event, you're still gonna top that road anyway. So it didn't make sense to us, it was actually running into low concrete, and we could just put an ice cold side turn around there, make it a dead industry, and open that down straight. Just a lot. We don't get elected, so it comes to some, we don't have to worry about folks, we can handle it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, surplus equipment bids. We've got bids, uh, are we okay and ready to go? And what is this car bid number, or is it part, or might be the boat?
Gentlemen, the agenda tonight.
Oh, I did just add a bid. We actually had it on a three point five, we're pretty sure. But we're sitting there and we talk about it and then, but...
All right, we have three bids, ninety-seven Crown Victoria, we have one bid, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Second bid, two hundred dollars, and a third bid for three hundred and eleven dollars. Ninety-seven Crown, uh, that's high as it's worth, I think, the highest, uh, where they project that. Ninety-seven, that's, we would have some of the cars going out.
You, you've got a way. Let's get it, we're getting back in. Take the high bid.
Set a motion.
I make motion, sit.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
There's a second, I'll call for a roll for vote.
Jim?
Yeah.
Jess?
Hi.
Larry?
I'll sit down on this, because I, I like to...
Christie?
Yes.
James?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
That motion passes, the nineteen ninety-seven Crown Victoria is sold.
Goodbye. I do. My wife, where do you get it now? Let's, let's... Would you go four hundred?
We need to change our order, next time we won't open it for bids, we'll open it for haggling. All right, we have bids for two thousand two Chevy Impala. All right, lowest bid is two hundred dollars for the two thousand two Chevy Impala. We also have a five hundred and three dollar bid on the Chevy Impala. So the high bid is five hundred and three dollars for the two thousand two Chevy Impala.
The second is...
For the second, I'll call for a roll of the vote.
Larry?
Hi.
Jim? Jess?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Christie?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
All right, that motion passes, the two thousand two Chevy Impala is sold.
Goodbye.
Five hundred and three dollars, Mr. Roberts. Is that, can we make that public now? Okay. Do you just don't plan on driving again?
Sorry, I gotta grab that.
All right. New business, we have police training, uh, on the agenda. I'm gonna defer to our chief of police, uh, to give us a little bit of input on that.
Okay, what it is, is, uh, for five hundred dollars, we have a sheriff's academy, uh, we can obtain training through them. And, uh, if we, if we don't pursue that, it's twenty dollars an officer, he's trying to defend that training. But it's very, very worthwhile to get that kind of agreement with the Sheriff's Association, those have a great deal of money that I think.
Where's that, that chief of...
Yes.
Where does that help?
Uh, we're trying to get most of the help right here.
How much do you estimate in the cost if you don't think of it right now?
I'd guess a couple thousand.
But that's a long bid?
Yeah, if there's a ribbon of order, you have to go out there and, and...
Well, that seems reasonable. I'll make the motion.
Wait a minute, please. Did you see this?
What?
Well, Travis just brought this out, that they're asking for us to, uh, raise our fines by assessing a dollar surcharge on each criminal case, on each section, each traffic trick, everything that we have. In addition to the five hundred dollars, is that right?
I thought we already did it, no, we already had fifteen.
We get money from the state from that, it comes separate, yeah, we do.
Is that related to this?
Yeah, we already did that.
No, it's related to this.
No, no, it's, it can only be used for continually, well, unfortunately, so I, I read that, that we can use that dollar, pay the five hundred.
Can you?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's be, be sure we know. I just, I just was unclear what these two items, how that related to that, what Chief Arson was talking about, I, I, I just don't know.
What it is, is that goes into our training fund right now, but I was wanting to use that five hundred dollars of that money to go towards this con, this agreement contract.
But are we gonna have to kick in an extra dollar, uh, each case?
No, no, that's collected.
From the, yeah.
That's collected for the fines.
Is that already being collected, or is that something that ravages?
No, that's already being collected.
Okay. I don't know what the quote is, so... Is that a fee or a fine? Did it say fee or fine?
I don't know, Debbie went to...
Big public court, you know?
Yeah. I'll tell you.
I assume so.
I'm sure.
Thirty dollars and fifty cents. The state keeps all that. Thought we got fines or, of course, this matter, I don't know, it's not, I don't know, it's a lot of, uh, state, state.
I think that's just a tip, if you use the, uh, society. Yeah, you pay it upfront, but this is better way to do it, I mean, kind of depending. Isn't that money right now, all that's going into the training fund?
Do you have...
That's what I, I went to poll, but I was just checking, I was just checking to see if it's the same statute, which recommends that this letter could get with the training funds.
And all officers have to have sixteen hours of continuing education. Well, that's what this is referenced to.
We have to have sixteen, thirteen hours, main, main education. So what they got from the training fund last year, which is that dollar, we, I'm assuming, is they got five hundred dollars exactly, which the letter says longer stay with these contributors, less than five hundred, then we should just, exactly like.
Seems reasonable, I make the motion. Your second? Offer for vote.
Wayne?
Hi.
Jim? James?
Hi.
Christie? Jess?
Hi.
Larry?
All right, we have bill number twelve, national five, important, authorized, Mary Tanner, and release agreement, the criminal, uh, warrant.
These are all resting, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I just replaced the name from the last one that had that, uh, which would have been the one that was on West Mostery, Perry, or, or, the one that just, uh, like, read on the, uh... There were many businesses, uh, in Mostery.
Yeah, and, uh, come apart, uh...
Who is it?
To, uh...
I can bet for this, for a little, he's, he's like... If we have hangers, it's not leased out yet, we leased one last year, but...
Well, we have a business one now.
Okay, so we got two hangers?
Other bag, same building, I believe, I...
Okay, I thought we were gonna, at one time we talked about leasing the whole thing, this event, and then that, that, you know, something, apparently we didn't do that. We just leased half, and this is the other half. Do you recommend me?
Yeah.
This lease is Debbie, is that head of court, Debbie?
Yeah, it's Travis Draft, this lease for you, uh...
I'll make a, I'll make the motion, we, uh, we leased it, we, uh, we're, uh, ready for some... Second. Offer for roll.
Jess?
Yeah.
Christie? James?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Larry?
That's, uh, offer for second reading, motion. Or I'm sorry, second reading, for... Make a motion. For second. Offer for roll.
Wayne?
Hi.
James? Jim? Christie?
No.
Jess?
Hi.
Wayne?
Is that motion passed? All right, that's all we have on the agenda. Hope Jess has something he'd like to add.
Um, we've been trying to buy a tractor and sidecar for a while. And one is becoming available for the green account. And it can be purchased, it's a used piece of, it's a new house, it's a, for a, it's a, it might be a, because it's a, it's a, it's a, thirteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand dollars, that's tractor and tractor. And I think the bitch is worth it because we got to be, we need to be, we need to, because it's a, it's a, it's a, so what I would like to do, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to purchase it, subject to larger going and working, it's important to see the sales for it. If it does satisfy the client, it would make sense to you, fifty, sixty thousand dollars.